All right, thank you so much. The time is 6:00 PM on Monday, April 17th, 2023. Thank you all for being here this evening. At this time, we are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Member Bucelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Marlonato.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. At this time, we have our first call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Ms. Garcia, do we have any speaker request this evening?
Mayor have not received any completed forms.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Please raise your hand. Mr. Beatty, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. Roger Beatty, Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, just wanted to let everybody know that we had two great ribbon cuttings on Main Street in the last week and a half. Ponderosa Dispensary in the Wrap Saloon opened up, and then we just walked over from Alta Southwest doing their ribbon cutting, and they're in complete office, came down to celebrate. And both have said amazing things about the town, working with the town to get open, and how easy and how wonderful it was, an effort by the town to get them open and get them running. So, just a big thank you to your staff and to the town again, and to say thank you for those businesses for coming to Florence. Thank you for your...
Thank you so much, Mr. Beatty. Is there anybody online that would like to speak? Please raise your hand emoji at this time. And we have one more speaker request here. You may proceed, ma'am. Okay. All right, closing the first call to the public. Next, we have presentations and public hearing. The first item is a public hearing to receive comments regarding the proposed annexation of approximately 37 acres of land known as Addaway Crossing, generally located at the northwest corner of East Hunt Highway and Addaway Road. Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, today is the public hearing only for the annexation of what is known as Addaway Crossing. This is APN 20024009H. It is currently a parcel outside of the town of Florence's jurisdiction, and it is under the Penal County's jurisdiction. The owner has applied for a annexation within the town. Annexation is the process by which an incorporated town or city may assume jurisdiction over another, over an unincorporated territory adjacent to our own boundaries. With this request, we began to move forward with the process of annexation, and it was authorized by the town council in February of this year. A blank annexation petition with a map and legal description was submitted to Penal County, and with that began the 30-day waiting process, which included advertisement within a local newspaper, and that was published on March 30th in Penal County Dispatch. It also, we did a social media post, which wasn't required, but we also sent out letters of notice to some owners, the only owner, as this parcel only has one owner. But it also sent out a couple of other letters of notice, one to the Penal County Board of Supervisors Chair, as well as to some neighboring landowners. This public hearing is meant to be within the last 10 days of that 30-day required hearing, and the 20th is that last day of this 30-day waiting period. Three signs have been posted on the site to also advertise this public hearing. With that being said, the current parcel is zoned general rural within Penal County, and if it is annexed within the town of Florence, it will have similar zoning, which will be R1R, also known as single-family rural ranchette. That zoning is comparative because they both require at least 1 and 1/4 acres of land. The Florence General Plan also identifies this as a suburban neighborhood place type, which allows for single-family housing, low to medium density. The property owner currently doesn't have any intent to develop at this time. They want to bring it into the town of Florence. Eventually, they want to combine the parcel next door, 2024009E, and then eventually sell it to a developer. With that, this is a public hearing only, so no action will be taken tonight. Are there any questions, or should we move on to opening public hearing?
I'll first ask, are there any council members that have questions or not comments, but questions? At this time, I'm going to open it up for the public hearing. If there's anybody that is in public or online that would like to speak, whether it is to make a comment or ask a question, please go ahead and raise your hand at this time. Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Good evening, council. Regarding this annexation, to be honest, I don't know if I'm excited about it, if I'm, you know, support or oppose it. I know that a lot of us residents are very nervous about our current roads, the lack thereof. We are very nervous about our water. Can I confirm, do we have three minutes, or how much time do we have for this? Okay, so, and I also see that there's an agenda item for Florence doing an executive session tonight to sell our Florence CAP water to Epcor, which serves north of the Gila, which is also a little alarming. I don't know what that's about, but with water being such a big issue and that area being served currently right now with Epcor, is a little alarming with all the water scare, you know, talks about drought and water and Anthem, I understand couldn't get approved for 90 more lots because they are not getting their certificate of, you know, their water assured, can't spit it out right now, but their certificate of water for those homes on that other side of the highway. So, I really hope that no matter what happens, everybody is being very open-minded about what is happening in our area. And then you have Eldorado Holdings that has over 4,000 acres over there, and it, growth is coming in around us like crazy, and I also understand if this does become annexed, yes, it's general rule right now, rural ranchettes, but we all know everything right now that's coming around us is high density. The city's not stopping it, nor is the county. So, it's a double-edged sword right now with what's happening with the development around us. And that growth is scary, not to mention the 1,600 acres at the Florence Center and Dobson Farms. It's just coming in like crazy, and all of us around here worried about our transportation and our water. And combined, this is going to be 150 acres. So, how many homes is that eventually going to be to an already horrible road system all around our area? So, I really hope that everybody's very mindful of that. So again, how's it going to benefit Florence besides collecting the taxes on it? And, you know, we're getting ready to spend $8 million to decommission the sewer plant, you know, talking about spending $21 million on a community center. It's like, where is all, it's so much right now, you guys, and it's really scary. So, we have to look out for the people that we have right now before we just keep growing and growing and growing and growing, especially with our water, especially with our roads. So have mercy on the people that are already here. I beg of you. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else either online or in person that has any questions or comments regarding this proposed item? All right. Anybody from council? At this time, this is our first public hearing. This item will come back before us. Who raised their hand, Councilmember Neal? Oh, Howard Bias. Hang on one moment, and we are going to allow you to talk. All right, can you hear us, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, council. My question is to you, that I know that the annexation for the particular lot there is by Florence is on the agenda tonight. My concern is that it's been alluded that on that such land that there's a, I guess, a recommendation or thought that they're going to be building manufactured homes there, and that is a lower-cost homes. So I was kind of, I wanted to get an understanding, is that also mixed in with this annexation of that land? Is that, where are we going with this?
At this time, because it's the first public hearing of it, I'm going to ask Ms. Maricela Benitez to come up, and do you have an answer for the gentleman this evening, or would you need time to respond?
No, I have the answer. At this time, there are no plans for manufactured home housing or subdivision.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Bias?
Yes, it does, thank you. Right, once, also, one more question. In this area there, we have Felix Road that has not been opened up near the rural ranch Pulte Home area, and I wanted to kind of know, when is the timeline, when that road will be opened up that leads from National Boulevard to the Felix area there?
That I'm, I don't know.
Is anyone?
What I can do is have Mr. Salas, Director of Public Works, look into that, and then if you could... Ms. Garcia, how can we get his contact information since he's online?
He can email it to me.
Okay, if you email lisa.garcia@florenceaz.gov, she will reach back to you and make sure that that answer is communicated, and for everybody else, it will be included in the next packet that this is in, so everybody has the same information.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You are very welcome. Is there anybody else in person or online? All right, I'm closing the first call to the public for the public hearing, so the public hearing is closed, but if anybody has questions or comments after the fact, you can always reach out to us via email, and that way we'll have the answers communicated back the next time this item appears. This evening, we have a few proclamations. I would like to ask council to join us down on the floor at this time.
Our first proclamation is for National Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas each year, people across the globe take time to recognize the millions of people living with autism spectrum disorder, and whereas autism spectrum disorder is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas 1 in 68 American children are diagnosed on the autism spectrum, whereas this number has increased over time as identification methods have improved. Whereas the town of Florence, Arizona, is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Acceptance Month and World Autism Day. Furthermore, Florence Town Hall will be lit blue to show our support for autism awareness during the month of April 2023. Now therefore, I tell Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Autism Acceptance Month, and join the nation in recognizing April as National Autism Acceptance Month as a symbol of our commitment to creating a culture of disability awareness and inclusion for all members of our community.
All right, our library staff, can you please come up if you are here with us this evening? We are so very proud of our library. We have a lot of great programs and services that are offered, and I'm going to have these amazing ladies and gentlemen share a little bit about what we have happening at our library, and then we are going to share proclamation.
So we have quite a few programs going on at the library, all geared towards different ages, for adults, for children, for youth, teens, and tweens. Happens every single day of the week except for Mondays, because we're currently closed on Monday. We also have a wonderful makerspace, that we have wonderful equipment in there. We're working on opening that up to entrepreneurship and business, small businesses, so they can come in and use some of that equipment. And we also have some wonderful things coming up for summer reading, so stay tuned, we have a lot going on.
Well, thank you so much, round of applause. All right, so this will be for you to display in the library. National Library Week, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of total connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I tell Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, to hereby proclaim April 23rd to the 29th of 2023 as National Library Week during this week. I encourage all residents to visit their libraries and explore the wealth of resources that are available. Let's give our library a round of applause. Community Services, come on back up. Let's talk about Arbor Day. Would you like to share a little bit about our Arbor Day before we have this amazing proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, community members. It's our pleasure, on April 28th, we're going to be joined by our parks maintenance staff, members of the community, to clean up the plots and the cemetery around the area from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM in the morning, again, on April 28th. So we'll be out there, please come join us, or at least celebrate with us. We're going to be doing 50 Italian cypress tree plantings with our partner maintenance staff and our rec club, which is our afternoon recreation programming club at the schools, and they're going to have participants out helping us plant trees. So it'll be a great event, really great for the community, and reducing that car mission for us, one tree at a time. So thank you very much.
All right, Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morant proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was the first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the entire nation and the world, and trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious top soil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and produce habitat for wildlife. And also, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I tell Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the town of Florence, Arizona. I urge all citizens to help celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I wanted to say in the order that it was presented. All right, at this time, the next agenda item, we have Ms. Shelley Robinson from the Florence Women's Club, the second vice president, presentation regarding the building renovations and the denim and diamonds fall.
So, good evening, Mayor and council member. I'm Shelley Robinson, and this is Shelley Valentini, easy to remember, two Shellys, from the Florence Women's Club. And I do want to just give you a very brief overview about our club and our upcoming event, but mostly what I want to leave you with is really the Women's Club desire to partnership with the town of Florence. As we have talked about tonight, the potential for growth in Florence is huge, and the charm we have of this town is unlike any other town in Arizona. And part of that charm is the history and the quality of life because of all of our historical buildings and what we can do with our town. And we're really concerned about the Florence Women's Club. Now, most of you, probably all of you have lived in Florence far longer than I have, so I'm just going to really short, give you some fun facts that I think are noteworthy. And the first thing is, the Florence Women's Club started as the Village Improvement Society back in 1897. It was a group of women that just really wanted to improve the town of Florence and improve the quality of life that people lived here. In 1914, they bought property, and in 1929, with prison labor, they built the building that now stands as the Florence Women's Club. Actually, it's been added on to. If you've been inside, that office area was the first building. But, I don't know if you knew, it was the first town hall. It was also a community library. It was also a community library. It served as the USO. And in 1989, it was added to the National Register of Historic Places. So with that, we can't just hire a carpenter to come in and fix the windows that burst open every time the wind blows. We really want to be true to the architectural design of the building and maintain our status on the National Register. So with that, we're writing grants, but as you know, writing grants, you have to have matching funds. And we don't have those matching funds. So our, one of our first steps is to have an event that will bring attention to the Florence Women's Club needs for that building renovation. Right now, we have, we have really, I would say, regenerated the Women's Club. We have 54 members right now, and the demographic is really from younger members to older members, and from all walks of life, and we're looking at adding to those numbers. So with that, I want to invite you to April 29th, 5:30, we're having the Denim and Diamonds Ball. And it's going to be, we'll have a big barbecue, we have a band, we have auction items, we're just going to have a lot of fun. But really, most importantly, we need the Town of Florence, we need the council, we need your support. And we're really asking that you attend and join your new city administrator in incoming. Russ has already bought his ticket, so we just really need your support. And this would be a good first way for us to start developing that partnership with you. Is there anything, Shelley, you'd like to add?
As you can tell, she was a teacher at one point in her past life. She does a good job with history. We've been working really hard on the event, and it's going to be a really wonderful event. We've got a lot of really great auction items in the community and surrounding area. I personally have been working on the auction, and we have things from, you know, a good 60 miles away, you know, 200, you know, from up.
1,900 miles away.
Yeah, that's right. Anyway, so like Shelley said, it's just so important that the community support this event, and so we need to get that, the mission out there, the event out there, and ask people to really come out, buy tickets, support, and come attend. So we appreciate your time on that. Any questions?
I do have a question, and this is a good question. Is it open to all ages?
I don't think we've dismissed anybody, no, so I'd say yes. If you can buy a ticket, you can come.
Okay, perfect. I know that that was a question that I had heard, so I said that I would ask.
That's a good question.
And I heard that from my daughter.
Yes, I would say it will be a family-friendly event.
Yes, excellent. Thank you so much, council. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I was just going to also say, I didn't hear you mention, but we should also mention that you can rent the women's the building for special events, weddings, parties, meetings, whatever, and that also helps you raise money as well to maintain the building and hopefully be able to qualify on that matching part of the grant. So if you have a special event coming up, they also have the patio and the inside and the patio if you haven't been there. It's a beautiful building, so think of it for your next special event that you might be hosting.
Thank you so much for mentioning that. And we do have new swamp coolers, so we can host events now in the summer, which before we couldn't. So that's going to be really helpful. So thank you so much for mentioning that.
Councilmember Bucialado?
So I did get on yesterday, and I found the link to the auction off somebody's post, but I haven't been able to find it again. Could you guys maybe push that out to us so we have the link and, you know, I can share it? But I did see it once. I saw like the trips on there, the gift certificates for, you know, the spa and stuff like that. But I've only seen it once, and I know the auction is where you're going to get a lot of your funding from. So if you guys could push that out a little bit, and if you guys could send that to me.
Okay.
We'll help share that for you guys.
We'll send it to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, ladies. Our next item is the Consent Agenda, and all items on the Consent Agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is the appointment of Kathleen DeRosa as the second alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission, with a term to expire December 31st, 2024. Item B is appointment of Mary Ann Palaya, and I sincerely hope I said that correctly, to the Community Services Advisory Board, with a term to expire December 31st, 2025, and to accept the Register of Demands ending March 31st, 2023, in the amount of $2,330,196.34. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our Consent Agenda. Is there any item anybody would like removed at this time? Ms. Ramirez, which item? I apologize, I could not hear you. Okay, 7A. All right, is there anybody else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda minus item 7A at this time.
I'll make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda with the exclusion of item A.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Ramirez, can you come up and do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you. So some of us are getting used to this part of the agenda, and maybe some guidance will be helpful. This is my first time ever being involved in something of this nature. But in reviewing the agenda packet, the almost 400-page agenda packet, you know, this was obviously in there with the application, the guidelines, and things of that nature. And something that struck my attention on the actual application was the part where, well, first of all, this applicant has only been a resident of Florence for one year, and maybe that was at the time of the application from last June. Do we want to consider people that have been here a little bit longer, that maybe have a little bit more vested interest in the community, maybe something to think about? A lot of us didn't even know when the applications, when it was announced, that they were even looking for applications for these alternate positions. So I know some of the people in the community was a little concerned about that, and apparently, according to the agenda, one other applicant applied and couldn't be reached, and so that's why we now only have the one application on the table. Another thing that struck my attention on this particular application, which was startling, in my opinion. You know, I get that this applicant was a mayor in a city in California and helped with some planning and zoning stuff in that area. And she noted how she helped with the general plan and how they wanted to, how she was for the growth without the sprawl, and that's a little scary for our little town with as fast as it's growing right now. But another thing that caught my attention was one of the questions on that application asked for the most significant contribution that she can make to this Planning and Zoning Commission, which in my opinion, this Planning and Zoning Commission is one of the most important things that our city deals with. Her comment was, "I would think my years of experience should speak for itself", without specifically answering how she could actually contribute to this very important position. It may be an alternate, but who knows when these positions come available, right? So part of the guidelines also state that they would like to know the political affiliation of these people. I didn't see a political affiliation anywhere in any of that paperwork, even with our current commissioners. Another thing that struck my attention was in was in the the ordinance, they really would like to see a balanced membership to include race, gender, geographical area, and I'm assuming that's maybe where these people on the commission live. So as it is right now, we only have one female commissioner, and the one alternate right now is a male. As far as geographical location where they live, if that's what that means, only one of those commissioners at this moment lives south of the Hila. This new applicant lives north of the Hila in Anthem. And a lot of us get concerned about that, you know, it is talk, and it's, you know, something to be concerned of. But I think that when these positions like this come up, I guess the applications went out last year sometime, but like I said, a lot of people didn't even know that they were even looking for these types of positions. But who we put on these commissions is very important and shouldn't be taken lightly.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That was the three minutes. I'm going to do two things, because I do see Ms. DeRosa in the audience, and I also want to reflect back to our town clerk. Ms. Garcia, can you please review those guidelines and the advertisements for all of our boards and commissions and how we continuously are recruiting?
Mayor, members of council, in October of each year, the town clerk's office puts out a advertisement for all vacant positions. This year, we put out advertisements on the town website as well as at our social media. I worked with the town's PIO, Jeff Graves, to push out the applications on multiple occasions. We also placed an advertisement in the Casa Grande Dispatch, which is now our local paper, but it's very difficult, we do see, to be able to locate those advertisements, so we did do a strong push on social media. We didn't have any positions available on Planning and Zoning. We contacted, we did have four, originally four applicants for Planning and Zoning Commission. We contacted each applicant and let them know that we did have other availability, and council has placed those individuals where they wanted to be placed to be able to fill our boards. The Town of Florence Town Code does allow for two alternative, alternate members of Planning and Zoning. A member is not considered to be part of the Planning and Zoning Commission while they are serving as an alternate. What they are, what they have is that council has appointed two people. So if someone resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the first alternate would automatically be put in place. If there is a second position that is resigned during the period, the second alternate would be put automatically in place. This was done several years ago, and the reason why we did this is because there's several times that we have Planning and Zoning advertisements that have been placed for public hearing and actions on specific items, and it's important to always maintain a quorum. So council did put those items in place so that we can continuously maintain a quorum. As for political party, the Town of Florence does not ask anyone to serve on a board to tell us what your political party is. As for being a resident for one year, that is a requirement to serve on Town Council underneath the state statutes. What we do ask of our board and commission members is that they are a registered voter of Penal County. And so this person did meet all requirements, and based on the fact that we had one application for one spot, we are recommending this person to be able to serve as alternative, as an alternate on Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Ms. DeRosa, I do see you in the audience. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself, say a few words at this time?
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Kathleen DeRosa. I reside at 7737 West Noble Prairie Drive in Anthem. I am willing to serve. I have five years' experience on Planning Commission in the city of Cathedral City, 22 years of community service to my community where I've lived previously. I am looking to serve here in the Town of Florence to serve the community in the best way possible, any way I can see fit. That is my God-given gift to give back to the community at this time. If council sees fit, I'd be honored to serve the city, the Town of Florence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? Councilmember Cortez?
I don't really have a question. I would just like to make a general statement that, one, I don't think we've ever, as long as I've been here, I don't think we've ever actually had a discussion when we've been appointing any commission or board members, because typically, we don't have enough applicants to even fill the open spots. So I am thrilled that we have two alternates for Planning and Zoning, because in the past, we have struggled to even have enough people there to have meetings. So I think that's great. I also strongly, strongly urge people to please stop dividing us by the Hila. I have lived in this town for nine years, and I have devoted countless hours to this community. And it upsets me every time I hear someone set me apart because I don't live in the historic part of Florence, because I live in Anthem. So it doesn't matter where you live, we all love Florence. We all are devoted to Florence, and we all want to see Florence grow and prosper in a responsible manner. Someone who has had years of experience in government, planning and zoning, community involvement, is a great asset to any of our commissions and boards. And so I welcome anybody who wants to join and wants to be a positive impact on our town, because that's what we need. Positive impact, so that we can all join together as one Florence, because we are all the same zip code, we all pay the same taxes, we all attend the same events, so I will just urge you to please stop dividing me from the Town of Florence, because I am a very devoted Florence resident.
Councilmember Bucialado?
So one thing that was said was that people would like to see it more balanced, more males and females. But the problem is, is we don't have people applying for those positions on these boards. And like Michelle said, we've never really had to worry about having a second alternate, because we didn't have enough people. But I highly encourage, if you feel this strongly about town, to come and apply for these positions, because Planning and Zoning, I'm one of the liaisons. Johnny is also a liaison, and the things that, you know, go on in those meetings are very important in the growth and the future of Florence. And it's very important that, you know, everybody gets involved in the capacity that they can, whether that's coming to the meetings, whether that's applying for a board, whatever it is that you want to do. If you feel that strongly about things, please come and apply for these positions. You know, let us go and revisit on how people are going to be placed into those positions. But seeing Ms. DeRosa's resume, it's pretty clear that she knows what she's doing when it comes to government. And like Michelle said, you know, we're all 85132. We need to start looking towards the future, and we need to do that together. Thank you.
I echo the same sentiments that have just been communicated, that is, and always will be, a point of frustration when people separate us. It's long in our history, and it's something that we've been trying to overcome for decades. I also want to say, when it comes to finding information about what boards, what commissions, what opportunities are available, it's all on florenceaz.gov. I want to say thank you so much for our future leaders that we have in the audience this evening, our Florence Teen Council that will be appointed in just a little while. They knew where to find the information. They applied, they came forward, they were interviewed, much in the same way we have our boards and our commissions sit in the interview with members of our council and members of our staff jointly and coherently. Then we come together in front of public, and this is where the information is presented, and this is where decisions are made in a public forum. So at this time, if there's no further questions or comments, I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Item 7A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8A is our unfinished business. Ordinance number 724-23 is our second reading and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence. of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, amending section 93-7 of the Town Code of the Town of Florence by providing revised restrictions for parking of recreational vehicles, boats and trailers in residential areas and repealing all other ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date of June 1st, 2023. Mr. Harvey Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor Walter. Vice, Vice Mayor, members of the town council. This is, as the mayor indicated, this is second reading of an ordinance to allow for a certain amount of encroachment of our recreational vehicles, boats and trailers in the front yards of residential areas. The ordinance was originally passed in October of last year restricting any encroachment and, um, due to some hardships by some residents, the mayor and council directed staff to take another look at this. And so this ordinance will allow a certain amount of relief, an encroachment of 15 feet into the front yards as long as they maintain a five-foot setback from the, the right-of-way line or their property line. So, um, if the council adopts the ordinance, it'll become effective June 1 of this year. So that concludes my comments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Again, this is the second reading prior to motion. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion. No, he's had his hand up the whole time. But thank you.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 724-23 as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 8B is discussion approval disapproval of awarding a contract to Republic Services for landfill service for town residential sanitation customers use as well as operational departments of the Town of Florence, Mr. Carl Dudding.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. At the beginning of this fiscal year, town staff published an RFP for landfill services. We received two responses, one from our current contractor and the second from our previous contractor. And the previous contractor held this contract through 2018. After receiving these proposals, we came to staff, or council, informed them of some findings and recommended some cap limits. At our last meeting, um... council placed a 18 cap limit per year with the five-ton max per trip and with the five-day, um, limit for construction. After those limits, uh, were put in place, we went back to the contractors and let them know that, uh, there were some changes based on the prior RFP. Both contractors agreed to move forward, um, with the solicitation. And so tonight, uh, council, our staff is recommending that, uh, we award the contract to Republic. Republic's pricing came in, um, 17 to 48% lower than, uh, the other contractor. And if you remember, we pay by the ton, but every trip, um, when they go to the landfill is weighed. And so there's a variation. I can't just say it's going to be 48% or 17%. Again, it depends on type of loads and, uh, the material that they're bringing. Uh, Republic has a price guarantee for three years versus, uh, the other contractor with, just had a 12-month guarantee. Republic does have a Saturday option available if people are willing to go to, um, Apache Junction. That is an option. Um, and Republic's landfill is open two hours a day longer than our current landfill. Uh, one thing we wanted to look at, because it is going to be a change to customers, is the distance. And so to try to be fair, we looked at three population centers. We looked at Florence Gardens, Town Core and Anthem. And so we calculated the distance on all three of those. And, um, Town Core, currently it's a 5.2 miles to the current landfill. That will go up to 12 miles. Anthem is currently at 7.3. That landfill change will take them down to 3.3 miles. And Florence Gardens is at a 7.3 and that will increase to 11.7. So overall, the, when you aggregate them, it's about a nine-mile difference in average. Up here I have...
Can you go back one slide? I just want to make one comment. One thing that I notice and that I do appreciate is that there is a Saturday option. I will say that on our town website, it shows that Saturday is currently an option. And I know this because I loaded my truck up this past Saturday and went to the dump to find it was closed and not in fact opened from 9 to 1.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm glad that Saturday is an option and I'm glad that the hours are longer.
Yeah. Now, I, I do want to note that Saturday option is Apache Junction, but it is available. So, uh, just wanted to be aware of that.
Makes a difference.
And we'll get the website fixed. I apologize.
That's okay.
And so there's, it's off a baseline.
That's the same one that we toured with Rad many years ago, is that correct?
I believe it's real close. It's, this is Republic, but Rad's, Rad does have a transfer landfill station in that area.
Yes, you are correct.
So I think it's within a mile of that, yeah. Um, if council does approve, this change will be effective July 1st. Um, we will update the website to warn everybody of the coming changes in social media and we will put a insert in the next three utility bills, notifying of this change as well as the new caps that council approved last time and as well as informing customers to try to consolidate loads when they can.
Council, do you have any questions?
Are we still going to have the, um, curbside pickup option?
Correct, yeah. Bulk trash pickup will still be available once a month.
Well, we also still have our cleanup days in Florence scheduled and this is just for public knowledge.
We, we will and I just wanted to put up a reminder. That's coming up, April 29th. And it's from 8:00 AM to noon. And, uh, so people are allowed to bring batteries, four tires, scrap metals, appliances and electronic waste. They do not accept paint or oil.
How can somebody dispose of paint, just for public knowledge?
Uh, Penau County, um... On our website points to the Penau County location that does take that. I believe there is a fee. I believe it is a, um, it's a private service, but they can find that on our website.
Excellent to know.
Alrighty.
Any questions, comments? Alright, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Republic Service.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 9, we have our new business. 9A is the appointment of Alicia Sullivan. I'm just, we're going to go through. I hear talking. Okay. So we are going to first read the item, then I'm going to invite some people up to where the Town of Florence backdrop is. Our town clerk is going to invite the students up one at a time and they will line up where the Town of Florence backdrop is and we are going to have a swearing in. At that time, any family members can also come up and you can join to take pictures, just so everybody knows how the flow will go. And council will also be joining them down. This is to bring to life the Florence Teen Council. This has been a process that has been in a rejuvenation for quite some time now. I want to say thank you. There is a teacher in the audience, Mrs. Oplinger, who worked with and facilitated the knowledge component to the students of being engaged in local government, how to find where to apply. She worked with and prepared students to come in and interview for this opportunity. This opportunity brings to light a connection with our youth in the community as well as an opportunity for them to learn skills in the area of public speaking, presentation, community service and making a difference in the community in which they live. It really does take a lot for youth to apply. It's putting yourself out there and I'm so proud of these amazing young scholars. I see our vice president of the school board, Mr. Beatty, is here with us this evening as well as principal Toby Haugen of Florence High School as well as other educators in Florence Unified School District, Mr. Hodgkiss. And I just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody else. So at this time, can we please have Alicia Sullivan, Aiden Rankin, Corinthian Carroll, Miley Darison, come forward. You will be appointed to the Florence Teen Council with a term to expire October 1st, 2025. I would also like Emma Coffey and Jasmine Cortez to come forward. They will be appointed with a term to expire October 2024. Prior to their swearing in, our council needs to make a motion. At this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 9A.
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So at this time, Ms. Garcia is going to swear in and council, let's make our way down to the floor, please.
State your name.
Emma Coffey.
Jasmine Cortez.
Corinthian Carroll.
Aiden Rankin.
Miley Darison.
Alicia Sullivan.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of state of Arizona.
All ordinances of the Town of Florence.
All ordinances of the Town of Florence.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith to the allegiance of faith.
Defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Defend them against all enemies, domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of the Florence Teen Council.
Of the Florence Teen Council.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Back of the word, we'll be at the signature. Mayor, council, you can get in for your pictures. Each one of you has one. Go ahead and find yours and sign it.
Alright, as they're signing, I gave them a quick, impromptu opportunity to share why they applied to serve their community. So as they are done signing, we're going to give them an opportunity to speak.
Why do you want to serve the community?
Um, to help my fellow youth grow and, um, improve.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Cortez and I wanted to serve on the Florence Teen Council because I wanted to spread my leadership abilities and my capabilities to the team and to represent the youth of Florence with all that I have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Miley Darison and I am applying to the Teen Council to help with the poverty in the teens and make them known that I'm here for them and I will help them in any way that I can. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emma Coffey and I would like to, I wanted to join the Teen Council so that I can build a relationship between the youth and the council.
Hi, I'm, oh, is it on? Okay, there we go, sorry. Hi, I'm Alicia Sullivan and I want to serve the Teen Council because I want to help make the community better and help, like, support youth and show, like, like, help. Okay, sorry. Goodness. And I want to support teens and like, help make sure that they get to where they're supposed to be. Thank you.
I'm Aiden Rankin, as most of us should know. I'll try to keep this short because these guys know I talk a lot. But, um, I personally joined the Florence Teen Council because, well, in the beginning, I really didn't think of it, but thanks to my teacher, Ms. Oplinger, she recommended me for it. I wanted to join because I thought it would be a very good way to communicate with my town a lot better, especially with me not living here anymore. I don't get to see all of the changes that are happening and understand all of what is going to happen in the future. So I thought as a Teen Council member, I can still be a partner with all of these great people you see up here and finally get to know the rest of this town that I would love to meet. Okay. I would like to, um, request to come up here, Mr. Toby Haugen and Vice President Beatty.
Roger Beatty.
Roger Beatty.
Ask if either wants to say a few words and then invite your council over so we can all take a picture together.
Okay, Mr. Haugen, do you have anything you would like to say?
Thank you again. My name is Toby Haugen. I'm the principal of Florence High School, sorry. Uh, and I just want to re-echo kind of what these young people have said. We get to work with them every single day. Um, and this is some of our, some of our best and brightest and the ones who are eager to be a part of, uh, community. Also want to acknowledge and, and just again, say a big thank you. As the mayor said, this has kind of been a rejuvenation that's been working on for years. I know we've been talking about it and trying to get kids involved. Um, and we can, I can do my part as a principal, uh, but clearly, uh, when you get the work of a great teacher and someone who cares about kids and talks to kids on a daily basis and motivates them and opens their eyes and teaches them about service to others... and teaches them about service to others and service to their, their community, we have to give a big thank you to Mrs. Allison Oplinger for that. Thank you. Mrs. Oplinger, do you want to, would you like to introduce yourself and share a minute?
It's dangerous giving me a microphone. I'm a ham, a theater major. I'm just proud of these kids. They're great. I love community involvement. I come from California. Don't hold it against me. And I love small town. I adore Florence. I've gotten into the whole rodeo thing. I love it all. So I'm just so glad that these, these kids are getting out into their community, working with the community. It's very important, I think, to them. And I'm so proud of you guys and you guys are just going to take the town to new levels. So congratulations, you guys.
Let's all get together for one big picture. Any FUSD staff that is here as well, come on in. Students, one more round of applause. It's a really fun group, too. If you could have sat in the interviews, they all have such amazing personalities and they are going to synergize so well together. I'm really excited. All right, Item B, we have completed. Item C, Discussion Approval Disapproval of Authorizing the Town Manager to Negotiate and Execute a Lease Agreement with Lexon Lane Studio LLC to Operate a Full Service Salon in Suite 201 of the Silver King Marketplace, Mr. Harvey Grass.
Thank you, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. A little bit of background, on January 3rd, the council authorized staff to negotiate a, an agreement with Main Street Fabric Company when they relocated from Suite 201 to 102 downstairs because of their, the growth they experienced in their business, which freed up Suite 201 for, for lease. And on January 9th, council authorized staff to release an RFP to lease Suite 201. On January 26th of this year, we released the RFP. We received four proposals. One of the proposals was disqualified because of a conflict of interest remaining with three proposals. We had a committee that was formed per our policy. The town has a policy in regards to how we evaluate and rate the proposals. The committee was composed of Richard Wilkie, who is the Economic Development Director for the City of Casa Grande, Courtney Gully, who is the Economic Development Coordinator for Pinell County, as well as myself. And I provided the council, mayor and council, a copy of each of the business plans for the three finalists. Each of the committee members independently and separately evaluated each proposal. And then we came together on March 27th to compare and contrast our numbers and to look at the aggregate scores. The valuation criteria is the same criteria we used in the previous solicitations. There's eight criteria. They're each weighted accordingly, as noted in the staff report. The, the, based upon the the proposals were from Lexon Lane, who is Elaine Chacon and Alexis Webster, who are proposing to establish a full service salon in Suite 201. We had a company by the name of Cord, Accord Creations Corporation that's recently relocated from Utah to Florence, where our freelance wanted to open up Suite 201 for education, art education classes. Who's, have a freelance portrait studio, sale original art, five prints, art supplies and apparel and, and other art-related supplies. And we also had a proposal, a similar proposal from Creative Flow Studio, who wished to have art classes and events for art-related issue, art-related events for a variety of age groups. Based upon the scoring, Lexon Lane Studio came out on top and that's the recommendation of the committee as well as staff, is that the town manager be authorized to negotiate a lease with, with them. They believe Elaine and Lexus are here this evening. If you have any specific questions regarding their operations, and I'm also available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? Applicants that are in the audience, would you like to come forward and say anything at this time? There's no pressure. I know that you spoke prior. Okay. How are you ladies this evening?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Uh, this has been such a long road and we are so appreciative of your support and your consideration, finally.
We just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to be a part of Florence and, and bring a full service salon to you guys and, and just be a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no questions, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Item 9C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, do I need a recount up here? It was unanimous. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much and congratulations, ladies. Welcome to Florence, ladies. The Silver King is full. Round of applause. Okay, that is the elementary teacher in me. All right, next, we have Discussion Approval Disapproval of Leveing the Same Primary Property Tax Amount as Last Year with a rate of $1.05 per $100 of net assessed valuation. I'm going to read it technically because I didn't look up, but I could feel Ms. Jimenez's eyes on me going, say the whole thing. It's 1.0556 per $100 net valuation. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. As you know, we're right in the middle of budget right now and this is a budgetary item. We wanted to seek your approval or disapproval of levying the tax the same as last year. And the reason for this, we did discuss this administratively and feel at this point, because of property values going up substantially and with the state of, uh, state shared revenues, we had a bump up this year in income tax revenues. And that's because they're getting ready to go to the flat tax. So they awarded cities and towns substantially, for us substantially quite a bit more money than we normally get. So we felt it would be appropriate at this time not to increase our tax levy for next year and try to keep it the same and then we'll, of course, evaluate it again next year. So with that, if I do not get your approval to levy this amount and I have to levy it higher, it will require a truth and taxation hearing, which I'll go out immediately to advertise for a public hearing.
All right, council, do you have any questions? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we approve D as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item 9D. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E is Discussion Approval Disapproval of Fiscal Year 2324 Employee Benefit Program with Blue Cross Blue Shield Arizona for Medical, Dental, Life and Avisis Vision Insurance, Teladoc for 24/7, Physician Access Benefits, Jorgensen Brooks Group for Employee Assistance Program, AFLAC for Supplemental Group Insurance Products, and Infinesource to administer our Section 125 Flexible Benefit Account. At this time, I'm calling forward Ms. Catherine Wilson to present.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This evening, we're presenting the benefits package and here with us this evening is our consultant, Eric Johnson with Gary Johnson Associates. He's going to present the actual packet renewal and then we'll discuss the premium, just the way the premium's going to be divided with your approval after his short presentation. So, Eric?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. My name's Eric Johnson. Some of you may remember me from years past. I've been asked to come out and talk a little bit about the benefits program this year. So we'll just kind of start off here at the top and basically, the medical is going up by about 7%. We've got a bunch of rate passes on the dental, the vision, the group life, voluntary life and the EAP programs. The Telomed is, which is Teladoc, is looking like it'll move from about 4.75 to a 550. And then the FSA and HSA accounts are having a no increase. Just to give you a little history on the medical specifically, we had a little bit tougher year this year on the large medical claims. We've have 12 active large claims that exceed just over a million dollars in claims for those 12 individuals. Last year, we had eight active large claims. And to try and explain some of that, I will tell you that I'm seeing this quite often amongst many employers. As for coming out of COVID, preventative care was kind of pushed to the side and many people couldn't go and have things done or seen. And so as people are being able to get into the hospitals more now, they're actually catching different types of sicknesses at later stages, which causes a little bit higher in large claims. You guys aren't any different than many of the other large employers that are experiencing some of this. So, like I said, last year you had about eight, this year we have 12, but we're, we're still able to manage those pretty well. Three of those 12 will exceed 125,000. We already have one that's almost pushing about 280. So just to kind of give you an idea, so there's some significant claims. Your total rolling claims right now are just exceeding just a little over 2 million. Your annualized premium, this is just an estimate, it will probably come in at about 2.3 million. So the carrier is looking for a benchmark of about an 80% loss ratio and right now we're at 89%. So about 9% higher than what the carrier would like, which then means higher rate increases. So their manual's projected at a 15.3%, but due to the longstanding relationship you guys have with Blue Cross, they, they came out with a 10.9. We were able to negotiate it down to about 9% and then we actually took it to market. And we looked at fully insured, hall ACA compliant plans. We looked at some self-funding, level funding options and so forth. Some of those bids came in somewhat competitive and we were able to leverage that and go back to Blue Cross and we got it down to about a seven, which is well below the trend that we're seeing with most employers with inflation concerns and medical inflation. It's actually a little bit higher than normal and the average employer is probably landing between a 10 and a 13. And you guys are coming out of seven despite some of the large claims concerns that you have. So overall, still looking pretty good despite kind of a, uh, would you say it, some information that wasn't necessarily the best picture, all right? Any questions on the medical piece? All right, so this right here is just showing you, um, the, there's actually, you have two plan designs. You have a $500 deductible plan and an HSA plan. And it's showing you that it's a 7% increase. Should have received something similar to this in your packet. Your dental, your dental's with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Your current rate is 29.96 for the employee only. You got a rate pass on the dental. And the, um, the composite with that is with your dental, it is bundled with your medical. So if we pull it out, you lose about a 1.5% discount on the medical. So the medical rates would actually go up about $10. What that basically means is you'd have to be able to find a carrier, a standalone carrier like a MetLife or a Principal or a Delta Dental, offer the same benefits at a $19 rate and that's just not out there in the marketplace. So your best place to stay is actually with Blue Cross, getting that 1.5% discount on the dental. Okay, any questions there? I know I'm firing through this pretty quickly, so. Avisis, your vision plan, gave you a rate pass. You're under a two-year rate guarantee. They're one of the, one of the two largest vision providers out there. And so since you're still under a two-year rate guarantee, we didn't take this one out to market. You're actually right there where the market is. Your life benefits are through Blue Cross Blue Shield. This benefit here gives you a quarter percent discount off of the medical rates. And those are actually very, very good rates for the life amount. And there was a, no, no increase on that one as well. Ancillary, other ancillary programs you have is your EAP, your telemedicine, which is Teladoc and your FSA. On the Jorgensen Brooks, your EAP program, which is your, your mental health benefits for employees when they're struggling with legal, financial, family, alcohol abuse, those types of things. They gave you a rate pass this year. The telemedicine is currently at 4.75 and they're asking for a 550, I believe. So I'm presenting it at a 550 right now, but I'd actually still, I think I might actually get that down a little bit more, but I'm, I'm showing it at 550 right now. And I'll show you some more information about that here in a second. And then Infinesource is, uh, helps with your FSA and your pre-tax plan. And that, as employees fund that, it allows them to pay for their medical expenses with pre-tax dollars and saves the, the employees' money and it also saves the town money because you're not having to match the payroll taxes on anything that's contributed into those accounts. Speaking specifically to the telemedicine, for last year, you had 43% of the active employees used it in one fashion or another. And the claims that did not hit Blue Cross, so this is a standalone program and anytime an employee uses it, it doesn't matter if they're enrolled as a single employee, anyone that lives under their roof has access to this. And so the employees and their families can utilize this. It allows them to get easy access to prescription drugs. So if they're not on your medical plan, they can still pick up the prescription drugs and just pay cash for that.
Recording and progress.
Sorry, did I do something? Not sure what just happened. Neither am I. Whoa. I think that's what we want, all right. I'll just, I'll screen through it real quick. Nope, there it is, right there. Okay. So, so basically, these claims aren't going against your experience with Blue Cross because it's outside. It's a third-party vendor that allows that 365 24-hour daycare. And so the claims that were avoided or did not go against your Blue Cross policy for last year was about 33,000. And this year, with just reporting the first two months, we've seen a little bit of a jump. And we've already, just through February, you've already avoided 7,000. And the whole program actually costs less than that. So it actually pays for itself. And it creates an opportunity for employees to get quick access to doctors in the evenings and so forth. So. Any questions? All right.
Go ahead, Counsel member Larson.
I don't really have a question so much for you and this presentation, all of that sounded fair to me. My question was more for overall. When we're talking about budget development, I personally would rather see this and the levy and all of that cumulatively with our budget books so that we can have more of a holistic picture of the financial scope of everything. That way, then we can help determine, this stuff I know obviously has to be taken care of. It's something that we have to do. That's fine. I just personally, either that means we get our budget books faster or we go a little bit later. Whichever way you want to swing that, I guess. But I feel like that's something I'd rather look at this with everything so we can get a full better scope. So just as feedback.
I can address that. We, we have to go through an open enrollment period, which is in May. And in order to go through that open enrollment period, we have to have the benefit package approved. And we were a little bit behind on getting everything kind of put together in that whole packet. But I needed to move forward with this so that we could get it approved and get going with our annual open enrollment, which will be the second half of May. And we need to do that so that we can have that month of June to do all of our administrative things for the benefit package and for the employees so that we have everything ready for effective date of July 1.
Right, I understand. I just remember during our budget development discussions in the past when they would work through things like this during that process. So I just would like to, for us to get back to that type of conversation where we're looking at everything at one time.
I think a little bit of it also had to do with the timing of the fact that we have large claims. And we were waiting for reports from Blue Cross and Blue Shield to get the renewal going. They were processing everything. So it kind of, it, it depends on how quickly the carriers can get us that information so that we can make an informed decision about how we want to move forward.
If I can add just a point of clarification, sometimes we get it a little earlier in this year because of the large claims. But based on what some of the trends we were seeing, I, I thought it might be a little bit better to hold off a couple extra weeks because if we get that extra month of claims added in, that's what helped us also get almost another 2% off the renewal because they were at a nine. And so sometimes it's a timing thing that helps your budget. And it was kind of a, I guess it's kind of a roll of the dice because if the claims come in really hot for another month, then that 9%, we knew we had it locked in, it wasn't going to get, wasn't going to get worse. But if it came in better, then we got it, we got another 2% out of it. So that's one of those things. I, I can, if you need me to, I can try and communicate that better in the, in the, in the future if we're having a year like we had this year where it was a little tougher.
In regards to the tax levy, you haven't heard the end of this because all this was, was an approval not to increase. It will come back before you within the budget and you will see all of that flow just like it normally does. But I have an issue whenever we are going to increase, there has to be a special hearing. It has to have special dates and timing. So this way I can better prepare this for you. Plus, we had a lot of questions last year on the tax levy. So I figured we might as well get this out of the way right away and see if you want to stay the way we are or go forward. So that's all, this is a clarification, but they will still be coming before the council when we're doing the budget.
So I guess for me, what I would have liked to have seen, because when I'm, when I'm looking at what the benefits are and, you know, how they're broken down, I can recall over the years like how it was an 80/20 split. And then we ended up going to like a 78/22. And now we're proposing a 75/25, which is a change of 3%, which really isn't a lot. But I wanted to just calculate the math because we do have a lot of our employees that when we're looking at, and Ms. Garcia, I'm sure you can help me in a moment. When we look at the, is it the salary classification, the scope and sequence as we go down, I want to make sure that we're not negatively impacting our employees that would now see an increase. Because I, I added up, and Mr. Johnson, you might be able to assist me on here. I just did the calculation between fiscal year, and I'm on page 365, if that's helpful for everybody else. And I'm just looking at the two tables that are here. And I added 362 and 338. I didn't put the cents in, I just pushed those aside. And that gave me $800. And that is using the calculation if there's no change in the premium.
Can I make a clarification? I'm down here.
I apologize. Identify the voice.
Okay, so on, on the dependent care premiums, we, the, the calculation is done in such a manner that because the employer pays for the employee only, you have to take the total monthly premium. So, and that's not, so you take the total monthly premium and you subtract out the depend, or the employee portion because that's set aside because the employer is already going to pay for that. And then you're going to take 78% of the remaining amount is the additional money from the dependent care premium that the town is responsible for. And then 22% of that remaining amount is what the employee is responsible for. So what we're shifting with.
That's not where I was going with it.
Okay.
In my head, those, the last two numbers, because I was just taking the two numbers because it was really easy for me to like go bloop, bloop. Like, because I know that we have a lot of different dynamics within our town. We have some that are employees only. We have some where they're married and they have no children. We have some that are single moms or single dads with their children. We have some that are whole families. So I just looked at the last row for simplicity. And I figured if I added the two numbers, that they should equal the same amount, that it was increasing overall. And it didn't do that for me, so I didn't understand why.
Okay, so I'm not understanding what numbers you're meaning?
So I added 338 and 362 and that equaled 800. And then I added 411 and 338 and that equaled 749. So if it was increasing across the board, my thought was it would have been the same. And then my other thought was I didn't know if we looked at, you know, 77, 76, like just to see what the difference would be and the impact would be to the employees. Because we just went through an entire process to make sure that we were compensating appropriately. And I just want to make sure that we're not increasing on one end and then taking away what we just gave them, is my concern.
Mayor, I just wanted to go back in time and remind you that at one point, we were 75/25. And what happened, we went through a series of years where we did not give any increases to our employees. So what the council did, they wanted to keep our employees whole. So they asked for us to develop the ratio that would not increase for that particular year. So that's how we got to the 78, what's that, 20?
And the 20, yeah, I went back and looked.
78/22, yes, and so.
That occurred in fiscal year, between fiscal year 2013 and 20, 2013, 14 and 2014, 15.
Okay. And so what we're doing now is as we have told counsel when we adopted the salary study, that we are going to get back to where we were. And we're going to continue to look at our cost of livings. We're going to continue to look at our scale to make sure we're competitive. And we're going to continue to look at merit every year. But one of the components that is, do we want to go back to that 75/25 to have that split right? And so it's, it's just an option that counsel has.
Okay, so you, there's an option tonight based on, okay. Counsel member four does.
So I will just piggyback. One, I would hope that we always try to keep our staff whole and that we do never backtrack because we did just go through a whole process of giving them raises, figuring out where we were at. And so then too, like the mayor said, to then turn around and add that back in somewhere else just defeated the purpose of trying to even us out. And we know as soon as we raised all of our bars, everybody turned right around and went and raised theirs. So it's going to be a continuous circle, but we need to try not to backtrack on ourselves. But then with what counsel member Kristen said, I get that we, we're not doing this in budget at the moment. But if things like this, we could get before our actual council packet. Because I know when I look at my benefits, which I do not get from the town of Florence, if anybody is interested to know, council is not covered by the town of Florence benefits. We have to provide our own. But when I sit there and look, this is not something I can look at in just a couple days and make a decision. That's me as a consumer trying to make a decision. So me as a council member trying to make a decision, what is best for the staff members of the town. I need more than just a couple days to look at this because I really want to sit here and look at it. Especially when I look at the dental and I think I purchased a dental plan from the dentist down the street and it was cheaper than this dental plan. So I, you know, I need time to look at things like that so that then I can ask questions like, well, why is that dental plan cheaper than this dental plan? But I didn't have enough time to truly go through this and be able to formulate great questions that would actually be impactful and be informative to not only me, but to our employees who then are going to have to sit here and make decisions themselves. And I know that typically when you are changing your insurance or anything like that, it's a quick process. Nobody really gives you time to look at it. It's like we no sooner roll it out and they have a short time period to make a decision which plan they're going to go with. And so we as council, since we're going to recommend this, these prices to them, we need to have more time to look at it. So however you can make that happen, you're going to have to figure out how to make that happen. Because it is not doing justice to us or our employees, which you are all one of these employees that benefit from our decision. Give us the time to actually make a really good informed decision that will hopefully benefit you and your family and your pocketbook in the end.
Are there any other questions or? All right, seeing none, we are being asked to make a recommended motion this evening to approve the fiscal year 2023, 2024 employee benefit program with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona for medical, dental, life and Avisis vision insurance, Teladoc for 24/7, physician access benefits, Jorgensen Brooks Group for employee assistant program, Aflac for supplemental group insurance products, and Infineosource to administer our section 125 flexible benefit account plan. Whoever makes the motion, if you can make the motion to state whether you want to keep it at 78/22 or change it to 75/25, that's the clarification we would need.
I make a motion that we approve item nine echo for, with the 75/25 of the employee benefits program with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, our next item is item F for discussion approval disapproval of the town manager signing the ADEQ consent decree for the future abandonment of the town of Florence North wastewater treatment plants. At this time, I'll call forward Mr. Chrisalis.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Approximately seven years ago, I remember my first few weeks very vividly and touring the north plant and seeing the condition of the north plant and making some early decisions about decommissioning that plant within the next 10 years. Well, seven years later, we have developed a scope, an alignment study and are working on the design to do that. During this time, we've had numerous, numerous failures of the upper clarifier. And I say that because it goes back to the RCA of we cannot provide compliant total nitrogen when that upper clarifier is not working correctly. We're not sure why it has broken so many times. As it has been repaired in-house, it has been, it has been repaired professionally. And we're not sure if there's been enough shift in some of the walls. And even after re-squaring things up using lasers, we still continually have problems with the upper clarifier not working correctly. So that is what, that is what the consent decree is essentially over, is ADEQ asking us to decommission the plant. But the truth of the matter is, we were already planning to decommission the plant. Unbeknownst to me, ADEQ had asked us, the town, to decommission this plant several decades ago. So during this process, I was informed of that request by ADEQ. So I guess we were all on the same page without knowing it. As indicated, when the bridge was constructed, we installed a force main under the river, which will link into eventually a lift station and move all those flows from the north to the south treatment plant. We also evaluated future development in there. So we didn't look at just Florence Gardens. We looked at several different developments where people are actively asking the town. And we had to make some limits to where that was as far as what's in the town limits, what could be developed in the next so many years, what, if any, annexations could occur. So we came up with a planning area and we work with the planning department to better understand the total amount of flow that we would have. And the design that is being processed would incorporate those flows. While it's not done yet, this would be separate from what is going to be going on with the almost 5,000 acres between Pulte and Eldorado Holdings. This will allow us to actually be able to recharge additional because right now we are unpermitted to recharge on the north plant. So this will help us pick up another 140,000 gallons a day. So there's some benefit to that. We like the idea of recharging as much as we can, not just for our community, but for the betterment of Pinale County. In the, in the consent decree, we have agreed to have the design completed by December 31, 2024, and 48 months from the execution or the effective date of this consent order to have the construction project completed. We hope to, to beat that 48 months by at least 12 months. But it's been tough right now with supply chain issues to determine how long some of these long lead items may take. We are in the process, we're working with finance and the procurement department to order the backup generator. And I believe that is like 50 some weeks out, so essentially a year by itself. Some of the other parts, as we get going in the design, we will procure those sooner than later. And part of a feature discussion, we are going to be bringing back the idea of using a construction manager at risk, or what is often referred to as a C Mar, which will help us when we're getting a contractor online to order some of these long lead items as soon as possible. We're also developing a GMP. But that's for another night. So tonight, this is obviously just to authorize Mr. Martin to execute the consent decree as agreed upon. So staff has reviewed this, administration has reviewed this, our attorney has reviewed this. And we've made comments. this, and we've made comments. And this is the final iteration between ADEQ and the town of Florence currently. With that, are there any questions?
So you did a good job of explaining it, but I did have a question that was asked prior to the meeting. And the question that was asked was, can you explain, just for general public, what decommissioning means and why it's going to cost potentially eight million dollars? We understand it, we can read the technical, but can you put it in basic?
Yeah. There are, so two, two parts, I guess there was two questions there. Why is it going to be so expensive? The equipment to essentially intake those flows, which would be called a wet well, there's cost to the wet well, there's cost to not just a single pump. It's, it's easy to understand why you would need redundancy. So there will be two pumps for the system. There are controls as far as skater tie-ins and additional lines that need to be run to convey that flow. The idea today is to have the lift station as close to the river as we can so it allows everything above it to gravity down to it rather than what is often referred to as kind of a, a Johnson utility system of having numerous, numerous lift stations and pump stations. All those things tend to fail and they are more costly. So whenever we can design something with gravity, which doesn't mean we can always do it, but we try to do that. So there, those are a bunch of, of costs as far as the infrastructure. I think as indicated in the RCA, right now, the engineer's estimate is five point nine million dollars, but that design is nowhere near done. And what we've, what we have discussed recently amongst staff and contractors that we've done business with is that over the last two years, each of those two years, we have looked at thirty percent inflation costs for construction costs in the state of Arizona. So when you multiply those two out, you come up with a multiplier of one point six nine just in the last two years. So not surprisingly, it's been very difficult for myself and staff to determine what a project is going to bid out. Earlier this year, or I guess last calendar year, we had a discussion about the roundabout project by ADOT where that was missed by, I think, forty-some percent. And so even people who have a lot of experience and have a lot of ability to look at, at construction costs are still struggling in the industry. So that is the answer to the first question, I hope. There's a significant amount of infrastructure that needs to be installed and that's the construction cost. As it relates to, a, a, a simple lift station typically could run three million dollars by itself. So that's why at five point nine, there are other costs associated with it. Decommissioning it, that, that word could mean a lot of different things. As of today, ADEQ is not making us necessarily destroy everything and haul it off. That would cost a lot more to the rate base. And so today, that has not been our idea. It's simply as removing the ability, decommissioning, removing the ability to treat the flows as well as puncturing holes in the basins to ensure that we do not fill those basins again. So there's a certain amount of insurance in there and then we would be closing that plant down essentially in the future, depending on what occurs with post-inbut and the trailhead. There could be a, a future project where all this is essentially decommissioned in standpoint of removing everything and hauling it off. But right in today, that adds substantial costs for an unknown. So today, we're trying to just get this project ADEQ compliant. And then as, as, as future planning efforts are associated with post-inbut, we would look at maybe possibly cleaning up the entire area. But today, just like I said, it's a bunch of additional costs that we don't feel we should pass on to the rate base, one way or another. And as I've explained before, when we spend money and reduce our fund balance, that fund balance is no longer there to offset future rate increases. So one way or the other, the rate base does pay for costs that are incurred.
Are we able to access any WIFA funding to assist us with this project?
Yes.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions or council member Neil?
I'm not an engineer, I'm not even going to pretend to think that I'm an engineer. My question is more along the lines of you saying it's been a problem for so long, why now is it coming to us? If it's been a problem for so long, why wasn't it done when, before COVID and everything jumped sky high is kind of basically my question.
Well, everything is going to be more expensive in the future. I mean, it was, this was a, this was a planned project that does take a while to develop and work through the line. We started this project several years ago. So to work through the alignment study, some of the environmental concerns, it definitely, you know, takes a little bit of time and, and one could obviously, and maybe justly criticize me for hunting out of way in other projects. The projects are, are being worked upon and I wish I had a better answer for why it wasn't done twenty years ago, you know? I'm, I'm not really sure. I just know that once we identified and did cost analysis, we made the decision to, this, this does have a long return on investment, this project. But with that said, ADEQ has now stepped in and is requiring us to take this offline. There, like I said, there are numerous issues. This plant was not in good shape when I was hired here and the idea was even at that point to take it offline and there just was other projects.
Council member Bucelato?
When that number, when you guys got, came up with that number, how many quotes were looked into to kind of get a budget about how much it was going to cost? How did you guys come up with that?
So you, we can't quote when we don't have design plans. So what is generally done from the design side, not the town side, because we should not be inappropriately meeting with contractors on a project that is under design. So the designer takes a series of projects that they've been working on over, let's just say, the last several years, and they look at unit pricing of this, unit pricing of that and just historical, and they look at inflation and they, they put all that numbers together. But I wouldn't be surprised if that, like I said, if that five point nine eventually moved up to eight, not necessarily just because of inflation, but because of the final design plans. Without a design, it's very tough. So for example, on street projects, it's very easy for me to do cost estimates because I know what a street is going to look like based on the functional classification. So if we're building an arterial, if we're building a minor arterial, we have a kind of unit pricing and you can look at Penal County, McDot, City of Phoenix, and all of our standards are pretty close per lane mile, per functional classification. But utilities are all but impossible to determine. Even when we look at a waterline project, there is, there's significant, based on the size, the scale of it, there are significant changes in costs. And I'll be honest, even if we got multiple bids, because we do have a project that just went out recently and it was very interesting to see how the two contractors kind of assigned different costs to each item, the unit costs were different, and the difference between the two bids was approximately thirteen, fourteen percent, which is pretty good. But it's, it's a really tough thing to look at even from, from bid to bid. One person might put eight thousand dollars per manhole and they win, and another person put forty-five hundred dollars per manhole. But because of the unit price of the, maybe like the sewer line itself is so much more, it's, it's really tough and it's been that way my whole career. That's not something you can necessarily do is try to go line item by line item. What we do is we check, we triple tape all the top three bids, we make sure there's no mathematical errors and we make sure that they have essentially taken their unit cost, multiplied it by the actual units, but it's very tough to do.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item?
Sorry. So Chris, I just, real quick, in that, as you were talking, I picked up on you said this has been a project that's been needed for quite some time. And I get it, you know, it, it does, one of the things I always complain about is the time it takes for government to figure out how to move a chair. It takes forever. But you also mentioned that everybody knew it needed to be done, everybody knew things were failing and all that, but other projects stepped in front of it? And I'm talking in simplicity, so what other projects or were, because I guess what concerns me is that we have something that now is to the point that ADEQ has stepped in to tell us, we have to do this, we have no choice, we need to do this. And then I hear things like puncture a hole and me not being in your field and having no idea what you're talking about ninety percent of the time. I'm like going, wait a minute, you're going to put a hole in something? What, what's going to be in there? Where is that going to go? So now in my mind, I'm thinking, we let something get so bad that ADEQ stepped in and we are a, a community that is pushing for everybody to raise the bar and get compliant and take good care of these and fix your sewer system. Like I just keep thinking of all these things that I sit up here and I stress to our community and I'm like, but we ourselves are allowing things to get to a point where somebody, an entity above us is stepping in and saying, hey, you guys haven't done your job maintaining your equipment. And I know this one's been a problem and no matter how many times you've tried to fix it, the fixes just don't seem to work. So it, it's clear, it's just, it's time for it to go away. What concerns do we have or should you, should I not have about safety? You know, when, like when you said puncture a hole, I was like, wait, what do you mean puncture a hole? And all I can think about is what type of treatment plant this is and wait, where's this stuff going? So because I'm not educated, can you just help maybe ease my mind a little bit about the safety concerns if we have any, anything like that?
Well, currently, there are genuine safety concerns for the operators today because the plant, like I said, I, I, I'm not here to tear down the past. Lisa's been very clear about that, so I'm not going to badmouth anybody before me. But the plant wasn't up to OSHA standards when I got here. And so we've tried to make certain modifications and we've tried to keep the plant running. And every time we invest a certain amount of money, assuming that it's going to fix the problem and we would have time to finish the design, it seems to not hold. The upper clarifier continues to break. And that's not the only thing that has broken, but that's the primary issue is that upper clarifier, we've had probably the lower clarifier fail three times. It's not efficient per gallon treated or per million gallons treated or per hundred thousand gallons treated. It is not efficient. So this will save overall the rate base by shifting this to a more efficient plan. In, in the future, I would say that there shouldn't be safety concerns once it is decommissioned because neither staff or ADEQ will allow something to be placed as a clean closure and be safety concerns. So I think one of the things that you were somewhat alluding to is us puncturing a hole in it. And before that hole is punctured, the entire area will be cleaned. I don't want to sit there and say spotless, but it will be cleaned and disinfected before there's a hole punctured. We will not puncture a hole with stuff in the basins. So they'll be cleaned first and essentially the, the puncturing of the basin is to not allow the town to change its mind per se and say, oh, we want to bring it back online. It's like, no, that ship has sailed. And as indicated, I think that one day we will probably clean up that area and quite possibly integrate it into our post-inbut, you know, trailhead and what is the brick thing you always refer to? The what house? Stackhouse, okay. So the stackhouse. That may be, again, through some type of grant, maybe that is, I don't want to say repurposed, but rehabilitated. And so that could be part of a bigger project. And so if we bring on those types of facilities, we're probably not going to want to have an attractive nuisance right next to it, even with a fence around it, a chain link fence around it or something to that point. At some point, I think that that whole situation will go away with. We're just trying not to, as you say, act slowly in terms of government. We're trying to, now that we have this momentum and this design going, we'd like to get that project completed.
So as council member Neil said, we're not engineers. You went to school, you're highly trained, educated, you have a lot of experience. For me, I'm very visual, so like maps and everything, that's where I really understand. So please bear with me because I'm going to ask you to walk through like a visual map as you're talking about like the post-inbut preserve. And I had read through regarding the permit and the discharge monitoring. I read how, you know, during the June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two ADEQ inspection, it goes on, I'm not going to read everything, but it talks about like the nitrogen alert level. Where is that nitrogen coming from? Like what's causing that in our?
It's, it's normal to the actual decomposing process, if you will. I'll try not to be too graphic. It's part of that process, but you have to have a delicate balance of moving the material, which is the clarifier, and then introducing air. And when we don't move the material enough, it becomes septic in certain locations and essentially produces high nitrogen.
Is that some of the smell maybe that has been experienced over the past few years?
Um, I don't think that that really has a big impact on, on the odor of the north plant, but if left completely, yes, it, being septic will cause additional odor. But that, that issue is because again, we can largely not move material without the clarifier working. It's, it's just, think about it as if you didn't have tires on your car. It would not work very effectively if you decided to take the front windshield out of your car. It's, it's one whole thing that sort of works homogeneously to get you to work or get you to a council meeting. And if you take a part away from it, for example, your brakes, it probably is not going to end well. And this is what we have is a lack of equipment that is able to be maintained. It, it seems like no matter what we've done, it continues to fail. So I'm not here to, to take anything away from ADEQ, but we were already planning this project before I realized that it was a historic project and what have you. So one of the things that we're, we're working on is an asset management system that will live past me or at least past my career here so that the next person who has this job will start off with a, a list of projects and deficiencies and things that are being worked on that was not afforded to me on my first day. Like I said, I, I share the frustration of some of the legacy projects because the legacy projects eat up a bunch of time and affect projects that are, should be currently worked on, but we're living so far in the past in so many ways. And it doesn't, it doesn't stop at the wastewater plant, it doesn't stop at the, the water, it doesn't stop with streets. It's all of public works. We're working from behind, so we're continually spending time and energy on things that are, are legacy problems. We are at the point now inside of Anthem, for example, our HA five projects, the ones where we paint the streets black, they're up to two thousand twenty, so we're getting really close to being fully caught up. But some of those subdivisions, as you know, are probably from two thousand and four and, and nothing was done from oh-four to essentially two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen when I got here. So we're spending time on those and we can't just do them all at once because it would aggravate a lot of people if we obviously did that much at once. We don't have the budget typically for that. Downtown just got finished with all of our chip seal projects except for the one right out door from here, from the fire station ones, concrete to ruggles is our last project in the downtown that hasn't been either upgraded with a chip seal or hasn't had some type of surface treatment on the ones that actually had real pavement in here. So a lot of stuff was that far behind where it's taking us now seven years to finalize, finally get to a point where we should be a hundred percent and then we'll probably take, we probably won't even take a year off in Anthem because the first units we did were units four and six and they're now more than ten years old. So we're going to be going back now and starting all this over. That's just an example of some of the stuff that, you know, the legacy problems definitely hinder public works. hinder public works.
Well, and I mean, I was going to say, as you're going through and the legacy problems, and I agree with the asset management system, that's something that I'd like all of our departments to have in play because that's an excellent planning document. When you're talking about like the roads and going back through with the filling, the item that was on the agenda earlier regarding the annexation of the property, I actually drove through all of the different like adjacent properties that would back up to that area because I wanted to see. And I did notice like there's cracks back in the road again that are like that by however deep they are.
Are we talking in Anthem?
Mm-hmm. So I mean, and I know that those projects were completed not even a few years ago, but they're already opened back up.
We were out there today. Dan Cisco's out there today putting together an inventory list to start back in October because we cannot crack seal when it's hot. The roads get all, you know, consolidated and then whatever you put in there, there's nothing to keep it in there. And then in the winter, it opens back up. So probably October, November, once it's cool, we'll start crack sealing again and evaluating all of Anthem for some of these cracks. Yes, we, maybe coincidentally, but we were out there today looking at it. And yes, that's, it's the nature of the Beast Republic works. As soon as you think you're done with something, by the time you're doing something else, that thing now is needing attention again.
Mayor, if I could, I, I would just go to this is a tough pill to swallow. That's why no one wants to swallow it. So councils before, it's been tough for managers before, for public works directors. It's difficult to swallow, in this case, possibly an $8 million pill. That's the toughest part of this whole deal. But understand that to the point, when this engineer's estimate, which is all it is right now, turns into a bid, you will have those things come before you and you can make decisions at that time, how that goes forward. The other thing is, yes, we'll go after as much grant and, and cost savings proposals through that process to make the pill as, hopefully as small as we can. But keep in mind that once this is done, the operations inefficiencies that are out there right now that we keep putting Band-Aids or duct tape, if you will, on will go away. And then you will have a much more efficient lift station that will go to an efficient plant that will generate those offset in the gallons per day that you'll need for your future growth. So there are some benefits to getting this done when we're doing it. It's just a tough capital pill to swallow in the meanwhile. And it's always been and then probably that's like you talked about all the other capital things, sometimes that capital investment has to be done. It will result in operational savings. It's just hard to see that at the time when you're swallowing an eight, in this case, million dollar pill.
And I was just about to redirect it back to the agenda item at hand, so thank you so much.
I apologize.
No, that's okay. It was great conversation. It was great to loop around it all loosely tied together. So without any further questions or comments, seeing none, we do need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 9F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have our legislative report. Mr. Jeff Graves, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It is the 99th day of this legislative session and the legislature is currently adjourned until next Tuesday, so Liz Harris's vacant seat can be filled in the House. In the meantime, lawmakers are continuing to work with the governor on the budget. Both sides are touting the progress that's being made, but details are still sparse. The League did mention that Republicans may attempt to tie funding for homelessness issues to some of their housing priorities and potential zoning bills, but that's still a tentative plan. The League is continuing to work with Senator Kaiser on their alternative zoning bill, but they're, they are uncertain if they'll be able to hammer out a compromise bill with all the moving parts. So more to come on that. Last week was the final week to hear bills in the opposing chambers committees. So you'll notice almost half the bills that we were tracking are no longer moving forward because they did not make it to conference committee. In terms of bills that we are still tracking and will need to do outreach on most likely, first there's Senate Bill 1131. This is the residential rental tax exemption that was resurrected and may become part of future budget negotiations. The bill, this bill was retained on the House Committee the whole calendar on Monday, so it may be reconsidered once the House reconvenes, in which case we will reach out in opposition. The economic impact on this was approximately $100,000 a year in terms of residential rental taxes that would now be exempted. And second, there's Senate Bill 1268. This is the bill that would increase the percentage of owners needed to approve an annexation from 50 to 60%. This bill was held during House Third Week, Third Read last week. With, with the House adjourned, I'd like to reach out to our representatives early next week on this bill before they reconvene. The League did issue an action alert for 1268, which I'll incorporate into our outreach messaging. Finally, I wanted to provide an update on the Prop 400 extension efforts. There's still quite a bit of daylight between MAG's regionally adopted transportation plan and the target legislation and the two current Prop 400 bills. To recap, both Representative Cook and Livingston have introduced Prop 400 extension bills. Cook's bill 2031 has all the components of the MAG plan, but not the recommending, recommended funding allocations, in particular for light rail and public transit, both of which are going to be critical in Maricopa County so they can remain in compliance with federal clean air standards, which is already going to be a significant challenge for the county. On the other hand, Livingston's bill 1102 is much closer to MAG's target allocations for their various transportation buckets, but it contains a number of supplemental items that are not directly relevant to extending the half cent sales tax. Leadership in the House and Senate have stated that they want, they would like MAG to work through their respective transportation chairs, which would be Representatives Cook and Farnsworth. So that does present a challenge for Livingston's bill going forward. MAG is continuing to engage with lawmakers and participate in stakeholder meetings, but as of yet, there hasn't been much movement or progress on getting a new Prop 400 bill to the governor. She did comment on Prop 400 for the first time within the last couple of weeks and did state that she wants to see a plan that aligns with MAG's regionally adopted plan and that keeps the public transit and light rail allocations intact. So that is the direction she has given to the legislature. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions regarding any Anthem bills? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have our town manager report, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I just, probably will be said by many people here, the Road to Country Thunder and the staff putting that together did a great job. I'm really proud to be from Florence and so that was really a good example of what we can do. I think it was important and I, you all got kind of quasi-introduced. I tried really hard even during the event the other night to introduce you to Paul King, our new community services director, who's here now in, in Real. So the community, come, reach out. He's in the library area, his office, and, and bring your new thoughts and ideas there. And then, of course, the Country Thunder event, I was able to go out there on Friday and kind of get a taste of it in the back, behind the scenes. So I appreciate the, the fire chief giving me that opportunity. Both Paul and I went out there on Friday to get an experience with that. But it's just a great, you know, going out there, seeing the way they do that, the, the county, good cooperation. And then I'll just point out, it was good to meet some of our CERT people, great volunteers and a, and a great service. That's something that every community should have. Those people are really great to have in the, the system. Just to give you a kind of heads up, meeting with the Department of Corrections and ultimately with the two copper companies, so Florence Copper and Resolution Copper over the next couple of weeks. So it's kind of, you know, coming full circle. I think I'm meeting with the superintendent in this next couple of days. So good stuff and I appreciate who I'm meeting and, and the warm welcome. And then finally, again, back to community services, it's been great to have Allison step up in that position. I think you all agree, we've been very fortunate to have somebody who is really well prepared to be there, be able to step up while we were in search for, waiting for my arrival to be able to make that selection. And again, we're just fortunate to have her step up. So again, when you see Allison, let her know, community, how much we appreciate her doing that from time to time. She's a great resource. So that's all, have a mayor.
Thank you very much. We have our second call to the public. If there's anybody in public or online that would like to splea, speak, not spleek, speak, go ahead and raise your hand. Mr. Mayor is coming up. And if you're online, just raise that hand emoji.
Is there anybody else online by chance?
There are seven attendees.
Well, if nobody else asked to speak, I'd love a few extra little bit of time of grace because three minutes is a lot of times not enough. So I wanted to go back to the item regarding the P&amp;Z Commission. So the reason I mentioned north of the border wasn't to physically divide the town, you guys, and I want you to understand that. In reading the agenda, and again, I'm not a politician, I'm just a concerned taxpayer, okay? So according to this agenda, it says Planning and Zoning Commission. Each Boarding Commission or Committee shall, as nearly as possible, have an integrated or balanced membership with representatives of each race, sex, and geographical area of the municipality. So a normal person, what, you know, what's that supposed to mean? Downtown Florence, on the east side of Butte, on the north side of, you know, so that's the only reason I mentioned that. And, you know, according to the paperwork, it's clear to see that everybody so far, and granted, these are appointed positions, they're not elected. So, you know, we all want to talk about integrated and, and balanced. That's the only reason that I said that is because, you know, and maybe something to consider, if we're not getting applications, maybe we should try to push harder to really be a little more inclusive to everybody. And again, a lot of people didn't know, you know, that that was, that people were accepting applications. So on this, the Citizens Guide, again, I didn't know there was two alternates, but on this, it says, membership, five members and one alternate, says out on here. So does this need to be fixed so the public is aware? And if I'm not mistaken, Lisa pointed out as she was explaining, there was four applications. The agenda says that only one was received, so what is what? And if I didn't understand that correctly, I don't know, but, and then it also states here, Council shall, in making the appointment, take into consideration each person's knowledge, background, interest, experience, availability, da-da-da-da-da. The applicant's political affiliation shall also be considered in making the appointment. So it says it right here. So I wasn't just pulling this stuff out of, out of thin air. So anyway, I just wanted to speak on, on that in, in defense. I wasn't trying to divide the town. I am all for Florence, 851 through 2 is Florence, okay? The inclusiveness of trying to bring everybody from all sides of the town onto this commission that is going to make all the changes in our town. So if there's no other call, can I be granted just another second or two? Or Mayor, your call, I guess?
So we do stay to the three minutes and it just went off.
Okay.
But you're doing an amazing job at emailing and I do know that our staff, we get back to you. They, I've been reading the answers, I've been reading the responses, going back and forth. So if you could, Ms. Garcia, follow up with Ms. Ramirez, because you did bring up some good points if it's printed that way. I didn't read it that way. I read it on the agenda part and typically it's, there's never political affiliations with municipals, so I don't know why it was read that way, but we can have Ms. Garcia follow up with you. So I agree. And it's all good points and valid and one way or another needs to be looked at and addressed. All right, I'm going to close the second call to the public, call to the council.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Bucelado.
I did just want to say real quick, welcome Mr. King to Florence. I was, I met him at the Road to Country Thunder and I just wanted to say that everybody involved in the Road to Country Thunder did a, a great job. I know it was mentioned there was a couple little kings by some town staff, but I think they're just being hard on themselves because every time I walked past trash can, it was emptied, there was no trash left. By the next morning, the town looked pristine again and I just wanted to say that you guys are doing great with everything that you do and, and thank you guys, we appreciate you.
I'll start with my best positive and it's self-serving, so I'll apologize in, ahead of time, but we did host our, I think it's seventh annual Say Yes to Prom and we were asked to partner with Queen Creek High School this year. That's who reached out to us, so that's where we went because it does cover all of Penal County and beyond. We have kids that come from Kearney. We don't turn anyone down. We had over 200 girls come to this year's event and I will say that is, it like I walked in and I was just so excited and I wasn't even there on time, which is strange for me, but Queen Creek High School took over the event and they managed it. That was part of the agreement to send it there was that they had to manage the event. And there, when I walked in and saw all those girls in there picking out their dresses, it was just so exciting to see that. The principal from the high school personally came and thanked me for coming that far, their staff, they're going to put it in their, their little newsletter. It was just really nice to have such a successful event because sometimes we have struggled with that event. So that's my little, that my little pat on the back because I don't normally do that. If you know me, I don't do that often. I did want to talk about, so if in our listing for commissions and boards, I would like to see geographical removed because we already have that you have to live within a certain geographical area to qualify. And I would also like to make sure that there is never a mention of political affiliation because that should have no bearing on if you get put on a board and commission at all because it's not a politically charged position. And then I also wanted to talk about, and Ms. Ramirez left, so, but we, we've been getting a lot of complaints about our builders and how they are not being respectful of the community that they are building in or around, especially the one that is over by A&amp;M Pizza, the dust and the amount of trash. So I have been driving by there and it does not appear they're doing any dust control ever at any point in time, even though they had a water truck sitting on a trailer. It was not on the ground and it was definitely not being utilized. And the amount of trash, and I've learned that new term attractive nuisance, and I'm pretty sure that nobody wants anyone to get injured. And the amount of debris and large items that somebody could easily get hurt on, that the amount of trash that I've seen blow from the site with some of the windy days that we've had, I guarantee you, if you take a drive to that builder's site somewhere else, they do not look like the site in Florence. And they are maintaining their dust control and they are maintaining their trash control. I would like to see them maintain that project the same way the county has maintained the bridge project. That bridge project is one of the cleanest construction sites I think I've seen in a long time and I've said that before. I expect all builders, when they come to the town of Florence, to respect our town, respect our residents and to follow the rules that are implemented by the county and the town. If the county is not going to enforce the rules, I'm expecting us to enforce the rules because ultimately they are in the town of Florence. And so I want to see that dirt sprayed down so the dust is not everywhere. I want to see that trash cleaned up on a daily basis. If you drive by there right now, it's bad. And it was even to the point where I thought they were abandoning the site because home sales have kind of stalled, not a lot, but enough to where they're not selling houses, they're not having to do lotteries to sell a house right now. So I, I'm, I would really like to see us start to push a little back on these builders and the next builder that comes in needs to understand the... the next builder that comes in needs to understand the expectations of them and their work sites. It's not just a safety issue for our residents, it's a safety issue for the people that are on that site as well, doing work. And we all know what dust, you know, the dust is a safety issue for us breathing, it causes valley fever, and many other issues. If you have asthma, it's only making it worse. So I would really like for us to step up our enforcement of our codes and requirements for everybody that is here. And then I would also like to make sure that, I know we have talked about Felix Road and the amount of traffic and the large trucks that are going down Felix Road, rock trucks and hay trucks, and I have witnessed now probably four large semis that are two-trailer lengths, that I'm saying would probably fit four vehicles on them, that are trying to make a turn off of Felix onto Hunt Highway or off of Hunt onto Felix. And when I watch them, they are pretty much almost in the ditch. And so in my mind, I'm thinking, you're going to flip, and then you're going to shut down our only way. If they shut down that section of that road, we can't get in or out anywhere, because now Felix is closed, Hunt is closed, and Ataway's going to get closed. And there we go. All we've got left is 79, and everybody is going to be stuck. So I, you know, I just want people to know that the conversation is happening, and I'm hoping to get some resolution. I would encourage our police chief to please start monitoring the speed on Felix, because these trucks are definitely not observing the speed limit, and we all know, when you have a heavy load, it is very difficult to stop on a dime, and it is a residential community, and there are people coming off of, you know, coming out of Anthem, coming out of Wildhorse Estates, and coming out of your old neighborhood.
That's what matters.
Yes. So we need, it's scary to me to think we've got young drivers that are turning out of there, and then we have our drivers that are older, and, you know, we are all moving at different speeds, but when somebody's coming down that road above 45, I'm a little concerned about that, because I don't want to get hit by one of those trucks. And I'm sure they don't want to be the cause of hitting me, so I would really like for us to do some speed monitoring on there, however you want to do it, but just to maybe get the message out that this is not a freeway, it is a residential road, and there are people coming from their houses onto this road, and it's not, you know, it's only two lanes, so if I'm slowing down to turn, and you're coming down 60, and you're not paying attention because you're on your phone, next thing we know, I'm going to have no backend of my vehicle. So those are kind of the things that I just wanted to bring up and ask people to start looking into. And then I had a great time at Road to Country Thunder, I had a great time at Country Thunder, and I appreciate everybody's hard work and dedication to getting that all done, and our town was spotless during Road to Country Thunder. It was amazing to see how hard staff worked to make sure that trash cans were empty and all that. So yeah, thank you.
So Councilmember Cortez, I just want to piggyback before I pass it over to Vice Mayor, as the police chief is out, and, oh, I apologize. Yeah, one, two, three. When you were talking about the large trucks speeding, they also are on their phones, and I know that not only are we having concerns with citizens that are driving while being on the phone, but when you have semi-trucks driving, coming into oncoming traffic, that also poses a problem, and that's happened a few times over the past few weeks. So I would also say, please keep an eye on those that are texting and driving.
Yes, ma'am. I know you guys, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys did a detail the other day actually on Felix Road, right? With the trucks?
Yes, Chief.
Yeah. I, okay, I remember getting an email about that, so I was just wondering how that went. Did you guys see anything or get anybody by anything?
We are tracking the information. We're also working on the speed up there as well, so I have talked to the town manager, and I'll be providing a report in about two weeks on that.
All right, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, congrats to Elaine and Alexis, so second time for charm. Team council, congrats to all of them. I know they're back home to finish off studying and doing their homework. So I just want to reach out to some of those team council members, probably at a meeting, and just talk to them about some of the programs that I think would benefit them with the American Legion, and to teach them some public speaking and some civics. Also, thank you for all those that made Road to Country Thunder a success. I was also fortunate to meet Mr. King. Good job on all your folks, and on Allison and the transition, it could be seen, just, you know, you just went in there, you just took care of business, hit the ground running, so to speak. So thank you for that. Third Friday, third Friday's going on, this is coming up Friday, it's the last one, so please come support that. The next one will be in October. So, yeah, so summer's coming, and with that, like I said, third Friday's going away for a little bit. So just come out and support that, please. And I'll try to make it out there to that. I'll be out at the cemetery next Saturday, so I'd like to encourage some of those constituents to go out there with me and make it nice and clean, and I'd like to challenge some of our council members to come out there and roll their sleeves up and get a little dirty with me. Just don't get your nails done the day before. And also that night, if they want to, and once they get all cleaned up after that, I'd like to challenge some of my fellow council members to go out to the Women's Club with me, so, and cut it up, so.
Were you doing at the Women's Club?
Isn't it this Saturday?
Oh, I thought you said tidy up.
No, no, after we get, after we get cleaned up from the...
Where do I have my ticket?
So, yeah, I just challenge anybody else that wants to come out and just have a good time out there and support the Women's Club. I didn't know that the Women's Club was so many things before, so I learned a lot tonight. That's all I got to say, just thank you, everybody. And also, Altman, Engineering, did I say that? Alt, Engineering. I was very fortunate to go out there earlier and hold a ribbon, and Councilman Cortez got to hold the ribbon, so it was pretty neat. I'm sorry I couldn't make some of the other grant openings, because it conflicted with some other stuff. And I was also fortunate enough to help with the prom dresses, and I got to do Kill Two Birds with One Stone. I got to help with the dresses, and I got to finally use See Click Fix for the first time, so that was pretty neat. I killed two birds with one stone in one day, so thanks.
Councilmember Larson.
I think a lot of the items have been said. The only item I wanted to quasi-piggyback off of was Councilmember Cortez's item, we're talking about Felix Road. I brought it up in, under prior administration, that when you're taking, really, it's on the right-hand side when you're heading southbound and you're hitting Hunt Highway, there's a hump there where you can't see, and everybody pulls forward so that they can see the traffic coming from the west side going east on Hunt Highway. And then when there is somebody turning northbound onto Felix, they have to back up, and it has caused, almost caused, an accident many times. When I talked to them previously, they told us that they weren't able to get them to concede to grade that lower or to fix that blinding issue, especially with the amount of heavy traffic that we've been experiencing and large vehicles. I see that this would be a potential issue, just getting worse and worse as years were to move on. So I'd like us to address that. If you could look into it, that'd be greatly appreciated. Otherwise, I think everything else has been said tonight. Appreciate all of the new businesses coming on Main Street, and welcome to Florence. We look forward to your presence downtown and having you be a partner in the community. So thank you so much for joining us here in Florence. And that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. What if those turn lanes would be a solution that we talked about? Vice Mayor?
Well, I guess you guys covered everything. I kind of agree with everything you guys said. Road to Country Thunder was awesome. I did speak to some of the staff afterwards, and I realized that, or I didn't realize that they worked until about midnight getting this all cleaned up for us, so kudos to that staff, those staff members. I think that was, you know, and I did, I would like to commend Councilmember Cortez for her Say Yes to the Dress project. She's been doing it for a very long time, and the stuff that she has for these girls is top-notch. It's, you know, something that I think we all need to pat her on the back for, because she's doing an awesome job, so thank you.
My favorite Councilmember Cortez story about the Say Yes to the Dress revolves around the color green. We interviewed for our Florence Town Council candidates, and one of the interview questions, it was at the end, and, "What is your favorite color?" It's to see what their favorite color is and also to see why. Almost all of them selected the color green, which is the color of the dress that Michelle was like, "Take all the green ones out." But after she heard the feedback from the youth, I will say this, she took their feedback, and I saw that you had highlighted a green dress at Say Yes to the Prom, and it was very elegant, because they're very into earth and environment. So that was interesting. So excellent job. Road to Country Thunder, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Florence High School baseball team for also pitching in and helping out in the community. They helped set out all of those hay bales, and the staff that did a fantastic job putting on the event, as well as our first responders that made sure everybody was safe at the event. Country Thunder also, they always do an amazing job in our community, they make sure that everything goes smooth and seamless. You know, it's always amazing how well the town, the county, and private partnerships like Country Thunder come together for the benefit of the community. They're a great partner to have, and we love when they come to our town. I also had, wanted to encourage people to attend Denim and Diamonds. Maybe we can have like a town council line dance perhaps? We can have some practices in here? Oh, it's happening. We have amazing events and activities going on, or encourage everybody to go and look at what is happening. We have a new event coming back to our community with Cinco de Mayo, so just continuing to encourage everybody to attend. This is a free event for the community, and it's great to bring everybody together. Congratulations to our team council, we're looking forward to working with you, and this year, they will be joining us at the annual league conference. So this is a great opportunity for them, as well as for us. Our new businesses, we mentioned Ponderosa and Alta had the ribbon cuttings. We also have Year Behind BBQ and the Irish Cowboy that will be coming open soon, and the new dentist office is going to be having a ribbon cutting on May 16th, I believe. I wanted to also congratulate Vice Mayor Mendoza and Councilmember Cortez. They have applied and they have been selected to represent the town of Florence on the Transportation Policy Committee at the league conference again this year, so congratulations. I am going to be continuing, and I'm serving, I applied and was selected for Economic Development, Neighborhood Quality, and Public Safety. We always want to make sure that, you know, we're just, we're here, we're representing the community, that's what we're all here for, and Councilmember Bucelado and I will be on a committee with the local Attorney General's Office for Crime Victims Awareness on April 24th. So hope to see everybody out and have a good night. We are going to be adjourning to an executive session, so at this time, we do need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.